For the Wednesday, July 1st, 2020, meeting of the City of Falls Church Planning Commission. And I will start off the meeting by this notice. The meeting for which this agenda has been posted will be held pursuant to and in compliance with the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Section 2.2-3708.2, and state and local legislation adopted to allow for continued government operation during the COVID-19 declared emergency. All participating members of the Planning Commission will be present at this meeting through electronic means. All members of the public are welcome to view the meeting at www.fallschurchba.gov/PC and on FTC TV, which is Channel 11 on RCTN, and Channel 35 on Verizon. Public comments will be accepted chronically until the end of the public hearing. Please submit those comments via email to plan@fallschurchba.gov. If everyone could mute, that would be great, too. Thank you. Again, you can submit public comment via email until the end of the public hearing by sending it to plan@fallschurchba.gov. And with that out of the way, Ms. Bazemore, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Rincon?
I'm here.
Mr. Krasner?
I'm here.
Ms. Teetz?
Here.
Mr. Punta?
Here.
Mr. Stevens?
Here.
Ms. Weiss?
Here.
Awesome.
Alrighty, thank you for that. As I just mentioned, just remember to mute when you're not talking. That will help us avoid technical problems. Background noise like right now, someone is printing something maybe? I don't know. Alright, thanks. I know it's annoying because then you have to remember unmute when you want to comment, but that'll help us out a lot. Alright, now that we've got the roll call, I just need a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
Chair, I move to adopt tonight's agenda.
Alright, motion for Mr. Stevens in a second from?
Ms. Teetz.
Ms. Teetz. I guess we'll do a quick roll call vote on that, Ms. Bazemore?
Yes. Mr. Rincon?
Yes.
Mr. Krasner?
Yes.
Ms. Teetz?
Yes.
Mr. Punta?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Weiss?
Yes.
Alright, we have an agenda. Number four on our agenda is receipt of petitions from items not on the agenda. I'm guessing we don't have any, but Ms. Bazemore, can you confirm?
Yes, there are none.
Alright, no receipts of petitions. There is not a speaker series today, so we're on to item 6A, which is a quick approval of the June 17 minute. I was absent. I don't have any comments, although I did watch it on TV. Good job, Mr. Krasner.
This is Tim. I do have one request for an addition. Under item 8, which is the West End Small Area Plan, probably after the fourth bullet, I would request to add the following. Several commissioners requested to delete language proposing to extend the two-step site plan approval process approved in POA 8 until further Planning Commission and public discussion has taken place.
Having watched the show, that sounds like a reasonable request. Any other comments or edits to the minute? Alright, not hearing any. Did you get a motion to approve those minutes as amended?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, and a second?
I'll second, Ms. Teetz.
Alright. Ms. Bazemore, can you call a quick vote?
Yes. Mr. Rincon?
I will abstain.
Mr. Krasner?
Hi.
Ms. Teetz?
Hi.
Mr. Punta?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Weiss?
Yes.
Alright, thanks for that. And now we're on to the March 16 minutes. The last meeting we actually had at City Hall seems so long ago. Any comments on those minutes? Alright. Sounds good. Are there any last-minute comments? Can I get a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Alright, moved by Mr. Punta and a second by Mr. Krasner, I think?
No, I think that was Mr. Punta.
Actually, it was Tim.
Oh, alright.
Moved by Punta, second by Stevens. Ms. Bazemore, quick vote, please. I know you're multitasking.
Mr. Rincon?
Yes.
Mr. Krasner?
Yes.
Ms. Teetz?
Yes.
Mr. Punta?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Weiss?
Yes.
Alrighty, thank you. Item 6 out of the way. Onto item number 7. Informational items. Planning Commissioner reports. Do we have any reports? I think there was an EDC meeting that I wasn't able to make it to. I know a lot of meetings aren't happening, but if anyone has a report to give, how is your time?
Yes, hi, this is Tim. I was at that EDC meeting. There are a couple of things I think I want to share. One is that the INSIGHT project won't be issued towards the commissions until so-called land purchase issues are resolved. So that's still a discussion with staff.
I'm getting some echo, so if you're not speaking, muting would help. Thank you.
In addition to that, what I'm calling Founder's 2, that's the proposal by Mill Creek to launch another project where the Rite Aid and the carpet story is. There's a lot of discussion about the need to revise our special exception ordinance to recognize the change in conditions for retail and commercial leasing. In other words, right now, it kind of says you have to have significant increases and the marketplace doesn't allow for that. So there was a lot of discussion about the need to reduce that hurdle, so to speak, to get approval for a project. And then, let's see, the last thing was there seemed to be some confusion on the public art process for the actual Founder's Row. So I would suggest to staff that they might want to send something to City Council just indicating what the process is for approving the mural for Founder's Row. And that's it.
Alright, thanks for that. Do we have any other reports from commissioners? No, anyone unmuting, so I'm gonna assume that is it. In terms of correspondence, the only correspondence I saw was, I think, just from the Assistant City Manager about the CIP update. Is that right? I assume everyone read that. I don't think there's much to talk about there.
I just have a question about that. I think I saw that the Stormwater Task Force had made some recommendations. I don't know if they've gone to City Council. I don't think they have, but it looks like the Stormwater Task Force made some recommendations in March, and it would be great to hear about those at some point.
Alright, a good request for meeting.
Alright. Thing else, I think we are slated to get a staff report from Mr. Fuller.
Yes, can you hear me alright?
I can, yeah.
Alright. So I just wanted to go over some of the upcoming items that are beyond tonight's meeting. So as you look at this sheet, we have some items coming up for the council, which are in blue, that we're starting to track again because they're related to items that we've been forward to the Planning Commission as well for recommendation or for action or both. So looking at the council agenda, they're gonna have a work session on the West Falls Church SESP and SE Amendment on July 6. That'll be coming to the Planning Commission for a work session on July 15. Also, that same item will be going to council the following week for July 13 for foreland board and commissions. And also, the South Gate 2 rezoning will also get first reading by council on that date. In terms of the July 15, the only action item we'll have would be the 212 East Jefferson subdivision final plat. That's scheduled. Then, work session, as I mentioned, on the West Falls Church SESP. And then, the UVA Public Art Policy Report would be presented and discussed under a work session. And then, comp plan. No, actually, it's the, I'm sorry, expanding the community notice to development applications, a work session to discuss that in terms of, you know, how we notice and advertise upcoming development reviews that are on our agendas. Then, following that, on May 5, we have recommendation to council on action on the West Falls Church SESP. Then we also have the South Gate 2 rezoning, the same public hearing recommendation to the council on that. In the meantime, the council will be working on some of these items parallel. And if you look towards the end, one of the questions for scheduling purposes, and mainly it's in regard to the tentative schedule for the Broad in Washington special exception, while we're still looking at parking and land use, real estate purchase issues. Potentially, that could start up in July, and so some tentative schedules are being looked at. And one of them would contemplate the Planning Commission meeting on August 19, their second meeting in August. Or you may have no intention of meeting on that date. But we do have both a potential SE item and a comprehensive plan-related item that could be entertained on August 19 if you were to decide to have that meeting. Otherwise, those would be scheduled in September on one of your upcoming meetings. So I would ask you tonight if you would discuss as a group your thoughts on whether you intend to meet or not in August, just so we can know for planning and scheduling purposes. Other than that, that's all I have tonight in terms of what I wanted to do on the director's report for the updates. Any questions?
I don't particularly have questions. To clarify about that schedule, often we only have one meeting in August because it's the heat of the summer and everyone's off doing things. I guess this year might be a little bit different, although I know some people are still able to get away. When do you need, would you like us to try to decide tonight if we'll be able to meet on the 19th?
Well, I would ask it, maybe you pull yourselves tonight as to what you're thinking of, and then if you could let us know within the, really, waiting two weeks would be, we'd be unable to schedule these things. But, I mean, the council can start Broad in Washington in July if that's what they decide to do, and then we can just delay looking at it in work session until September versus August. And so, I mean, normally that is a time you do not meet, so there wasn't really the expectation that you would, but we just wanted to run that by you.
Right, and if we plan to meet and then both of those tentative things aren't happening, we would just scrap the meeting, right?
Yeah, yes, yeah.
I'm available. Why don't we just take a quick minute to, how will we do this? Anyone who can't meet or doesn't want to meet on that day, chime in now, which is fine, no judgment. I fully understand that we don't normally meet the second week, the second meeting in August.
Actually, I won't be at the first meeting in August, but I will, on the 5th, I probably will not be here, but on the 19th, I will be around.
Yeah, one difference this year is school starts.
Early, yeah.
For the following week, so I don't know if that means more people will be around or less. So I'm not hearing a big opposition to it, Mary, so I think I think if that would help those projects move along, that you could pencil us in for that meeting.
Okay, yeah, as Mr., as was mentioned earlier, you know, there's still determination being made on whether Broad in Washington's ready. So I think that'll be figured out in the next week or so, and so we'll still leave August 19 as a Planning Commission potential meeting on the schedule, and we'll see how things fall.
Alright, thank you. Alright, that wraps up the director's report, which concludes the public hearing part of this meeting, but we will now just roll right into three work session items. The first one being the exciting yard averaging topic. I assume you get a staff report on this.
Yes, and it's an exciting staff report. Good evening, Planning Commission. It's Akita with Planning. So the purpose of this work session is to solicit Planning Commission's guidance on whether to explore potential changes to the requirements for front yard averaging in single-family residential districts. Before I get to staff's recommendation, I'd like to provide a brief background on yard averaging. So our zoning code contains both primary and supplemental regulations for setbacks in the single-family districts, which are the R1A and R1B districts. Based on Sections 48-238 and 48-263 of the zoning code, the required front setback is 30 feet in R1A and 25 feet in R1B. However, the supplemental regulations found in Section 48-1102C and D may increase the required yard as much as 50 feet depending on the neighboring lots. And for the record, that section reads, "Front yards in any R district, a minimum front yard for new construction, no building, new buildings, and new additions to existing residential structures, except for corner lots in R1A and R1B districts, shall be the average of the nearest front yards on either side, or if there be a building on one side only, then it shall be the same as the front yard for that building, provided no front yard shall be less than 30 feet in R1A district and 25 feet in an R1B district, and that no front yard need be more than 50 feet." And then, directly below, subsection D provides the method in which the front yard is measured, and it says, "Measurement of yards: The minimum front yard depth specified herein and the minimum width of the side yards on the street sides of corner lots shall be measured from the existing street right-of-way line. Each yard shall be measured horizontally to the nearest point of the building or nearest line of the use area, except for allowable projections." The city attorney recently reviewed these code sections and found that the code calls for averaging the front yards measured from the nearest part of the existing building on either side of the new construction and using that average as the setback for the new construction. This brings us to the zoning administrator's interpretation and past practice. Because of the complexities involved in properly interpreting front yard averaging requirements, the zoning administrator has previously used the following methods to implement front yard averaging. One, apply yard averaging requirements while measuring front yards from the nearest part of the existing building. This is consistent with the current legal reading from the city attorney described earlier. Two, apply yard averaging requirements using standard setback requirements described in Section 48-238 and 48-263. This results in the average being the same as the required yard, 30 and 25 for R1A and R1B respectively. Three, rely solely on the standard yard requirements for R1A and R1B, which is 30 and 25. Additionally, yard averaging requirement was not applied to subdivisions. Based on discussions with the zoning administrator, yard averaging introduces numerous complexities for applicants and staff. As provided in the code, front yard requirements are evaluated for all new construction activities, including teardown and rebuild of new homes, additions, porches. Some issues with yard averaging include, for example, one, correctly identifying the nearest point of the building. The front yard averaging section calls for measuring from the nearest point of building and specifically excludes projections. A porch is listed under the allowable projections in Section 48-1102E. The code definition for buildings states, "Any structure having a roof supported by columns or walls used or intended to be used for the shelter, housing, or enclosures of persons." So it's unclear from these definitions how to identify the nearest point of a building when it includes a porch with columns and a roof or a porch with an enclosed room above. Second notable issue is the rippling restrictions based on changes to neighboring properties. As I mentioned earlier, front yard requirements are applied to each application for new construction. This means that the buildable area of a lot can shift with new construction on neighboring lots. Emily, could we scroll down to the graphic if you don't mind? Thank you. As you can see in the example provided in the staff report, it's right on the screen now. If Lot 3 completes a teardown and rebuild, the new structure would be built at the average setback line of 40 feet, which is the average of Lots 4 and 2. That would in turn increase the required setback of Lot 2 to 35 feet, thereby limiting what could be done on that lot. This may also impact the ability to construct porches. As discussed earlier, porches are allowable projections into the required yards. Porches are allowed to project eight feet into the required yard, where Lot 2 in the diagram could construct a porch eight feet deep previously. After construction on Lot 3, a porch would not be possible because that existing home is now encroaching in the front setback. Some procedural issues include, one, additional information required for permit applications. To properly evaluate setback requirements, staff would need information about neighboring properties. Certificate, a certified survey generally requires property access, which may not be possible in all cases. So what do we do there? Two, timing and calculating and measuring yard. As I mentioned earlier, front yard requirements can change based on construction activity on neighboring properties. Therefore, staff would need to clarify when in the permitting and construction process setbacks are measured, which is not clear in the code right now. Three, suspension of review on current applications. So this is the zoning administrator's position now. While yard averaging is under evaluation, he has temporarily suspended review of all buildings and grading permit applications involving front yard requirements. And just to sort of understand the gravity of that, in 2019, there were approximately 50 applications involving a review of required yards, including primarily new home construction and porch additions. Based on staff evaluation provided in the report, staff recommends Planning Commission consider the three general options that's listed on page 1, and I'll just read them out. One, no change, apply front yard average as prescribed in the code. So that will keep things as they are, but will apply front yard averaging moving forward. Two, remove averaging as a requirement and apply the setbacks prescribed for standard R1A and R1B front yard setbacks, so that would keep the 30 and 25. Three, develop neighborhood-specific setbacks based on existing setback conditions in various areas of the city. Staff would study the feasibility of applying setback requirements that reflect existing typical conditions in neighborhoods like Broadmont and Greenway Downs. So right now, we don't have any reliable data to determine existing building locations for various areas of the city to see if option 3 would be feasible. So if the commission finds option 3 a good option to explore, then staff would commit time to study that and come back to the commission with our findings. Before I conclude, I just wanted to sort of go over the attachments. Got four attachments. The first one's pretty self-explanatory. It's the relevant zoning code sections that I had excerpts in the staff report. And then, the fourth attachment is the court settlement that Commissioner Teetz mentioned several meetings ago. And that court settlement references two BZA minutes, and so attachment 2 and 3 are those two BZA minutes that's referenced in the court settlement. That's all I have. I'm happy to take any questions, but otherwise, I'm really eager to and look forward to hearing the discussion from Planning Commission on yard averaging.
Alright, thank you very much for that presentation. I think what I'm gonna do is, just to make this organized, I'm gonna give everybody a chance to ask questions. I'm gonna go alphabetically by last name. If you don't have a question or you aren't ready, you can pass and have a chance at the end, but this is just to make it easy. So I'll start with you, Mr. Krasner, if you want to comment now or wait.
I guess I can comment a little bit now. I may have more to add. I mean, to be honest, I've always been, I don't know, I've never been a big fan of the yard averaging. You know, I think that it's, well, you know, obviously, what's adopted as code, you know, should have been followed. That's kind of a different issue, but, you know, now that we're looking at revisiting that part of the code, I've always thought that the yard averaging is, it's confusing, it's hard for staff, I think, to apply. You know, you get, it gets very difficult. I think, I mean, I think I understand why it's in the code and what the intent may have been, you know, years ago. You know, I think to the extent that the city has seen, you know, substantial new construction, you know, it becomes more difficult, you know, to kind of maintain that. You know, like, my street is probably an extreme example on Lincoln, you know, my block where you saw, you know, a huge number of new homes all constructed around the same time. But even in other parts of the city where the more typical scenario of houses that are being remodeled or, you know, new construction subdivisions, I just find that it's harder to apply, it's harder to interpret, which may have been why the zoning administrator and other folks, you know, sort of moved away from it, even though, you know, they maybe got beyond what they were allowed to interpret. So, you know, I mean, my initial gut is that we should look at setbacks that make sense, but move away from yard averaging. I'm all for looking at setbacks that might be specific to certain neighborhoods. I think, you know, we've, the city has, I guess for a long time, you know, had just two single-family, you know, districts and, you know, I don't know if they make a lot of sense, you know, exactly where they're mapped and whether or not. I mean, there's some, you know, I think it's just been that way for so long. If we're thinking about maybe looking at that, I'm always a fan for updating parts of the city's ordinance as it relates to the neighborhoods in the single-family residential because I think our code is way out of date when it comes to that. So that's kind of a long soliloquy here, but, you know, my overall opinion is that I'd like to move away, see us move away from yard averaging and maybe look at other things that we can do with the code to provide the character we want. It all gets down to kind of the character we want to see. You know, the difference between large setbacks and small setbacks come down to, you know, character. Smaller setbacks from the front yard lot line tend to be, you know, kind of a more urban, you know, character, whereas the deep setbacks are more suburban, and we kind of need to decide what makes sense. But yard averaging, I think, is cumbersome to apply. So that's my two cents.
Alright, thank you, and you can comment further at the end. Mr. Punta, do you have thought?
Thank you. I agree about the confusion. That's actually the words that I was writing down here. It's very confusing. I think for most of us as commissioners, I don't think it's actually doing what we want it to do. We've had these conversations over the last couple of meetings. Always feels like there's a way to get around them in a way that is unclear. I think to most of us as commissioners, it's probably completely unclear to most of the general public. So I'm in favor of taking a hard look at it with the intention of getting rid of it and not applying it. I also, you know, this whole notion of somebody making an improvement to adjacent property that affects the adjacent neighbors is untenable to me. I don't know how that is applied, but that's, for that reason alone, I think it really requires a hard look. I don't understand the porch piece, even just going through this last night and reading it twice and listening to the staff's description here. So I think that does need to be clarified. That seems to be a confusing piece. And just curious of what the best practices are around the region, around the country, you know, other places use this or not. Are we outliers in terms of that? Thanks.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Stevens, you have some thought?
Yeah, a thought or two. I agree with Mr. Punta's comment on it would be helpful if we had some context as far as as far as what other jurisdictions, particularly here in Northern Virginia, are doing on this type of an issue, just to give us at least some more subject matter to think about. One question I do have is since it's indicated in the staff report that the city attorney has already ruled and that averaging is the interpretation that she has found. It seems to me, aren't we obligated to follow the city attorney's interpretation? You know, that would seem to kind of expose the issue as far as we're concerned. Though we could certainly recommend to city council that they look for some ways to tidy up the code to make it clearer on things like definition of porches and so forth that are causing fits for staff right now. But as it relates to the fundamental issue, it seems to me that that's kind of been handed to us. So maybe I'm wrong with that understanding. So I'll leave it at that for the moment.
All right. Thanks for that. Yeah, that was one of my questions, which is, I assume we are making recommendations since I don't think we have the power to change the code or so. On to Ms. Teetz. I'm sure you have some thoughts.
I have some thoughts, yes. First, a clarification. The two BZA minutes that are listed in our agenda are actually two cases that came after the settlement where the BZA upheld averaging as described in the settlement. There's actually just a little bit of history leading up to our settlement that we had with the city in 2006. We found out there were 24 cases between 1985 and 2000, well, February 2005, that dealt with averaging with the BZA. And then after John Boyle joined as our zoning administrator in February 05, he had at least seven cases. And in the second 8A attachment, the BZA minutes of October 15, 2015, Mr. Boyle actually described what averaging was and described how to do it. And he seemed very clear in those minutes that he knew how to do it. So I would just say that the thing that's most egregious here is that this idea that it's confusing. Previous to this, Mr. Rock, who was the zoning administrator before February 05, he explained averaging many, many times in BZA minutes. And after that, like I said, Mr. Boyle also explained it and seemed to understand how to do it. So I don't want to make a change because staff is saying it's confusing. What's actually happened is between our settlement and current times until the city attorney stepped in, the staff has chosen not to ignore averaging and sometimes use averaging. It really doesn't make any sense to me. I mean, they're ignoring averaging at times. And in this 2015 BZA case, it was the zoning administrator that suggested to go to the BZA to not have to do averaging on our house because of some, a tree and some other conditions. So I don't actually think it's confusing for staff. We have it in BZA minutes. It's very clear that Mr. Boyle knows how to average. He had chosen not to for various different reasons, even though there was a legal sentiment and multiple BZA cases that determined how to average. So now the city attorney stepped in and said, we are going to average. I'm with Mr. Stevens. I don't know why this is on hold. I think currently, we should go forward with averaging of yards while we discuss this. I'm okay with not changing the code because I think the front yard average was put in the code for a specific reason. Mr. Rock explained it one time to me that it allows for a gentle undulation of houses so you don't have this salt tooth appearance that makes it a neighborhood more attractive. And that also then you don't find a neighbor with a new house that's jutting forward of them, kind of giving them a wall in their front yard. So there's a lot of good reasons for it. Also, if you average yards, you know, it places the houses at a similar distance in terms of like how much yard is being impervious and stuff like that. It makes a lot of difference. But I'm also okay with it. We want to go with number three, where we start to look at specific neighborhoods and talk about and look at like what the setbacks look like. We know we have neighborhoods like Greenway Downs that don't specifically meet code as it is now. They're grandfathered in because of when they were laid out. And maybe that, you know, that's fair to me. Like, give neighborhoods a chance to look at how their houses are laid out and adjust averaging or adjust front yards to how those neighborhoods feel about it. I mean, Broadmont, one of those cases, that 2010 case is actually a Broadmont case where that whole neighborhood came in and was very upset about the placement of a house and appealed it. So I think that if we're going to do anything, we do number three. But I just want to make it clear, I don't think there is any confusion here. If you read those minutes, Mr. Boyle clearly understands how to average and what to do and has done it when he wanted to. So that's my piece.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Teetz. Ms. Weiss, do you have any thought?
I do. It seems like we're doing questions and comments now. I'll share both, but I mostly have questions. My first question is, in the case of the graphic where Lot 2 is all of a sudden constrained in their ability to build a porch, should they want to, is it possible under current code or the change to grandfather Lot 2 in so they could still treat their house the way they treated it when they first purchased it? In other words, build a porch if they want to? That was my first question.
The second question is, the comment on the number of houses, housing applications last year felt a little bit alarmist. I think this year is a very different situation. So I would actually be interested in understanding how many applications are currently being held up as a result of this discussion. My third question is, if we did look back at the last year, just in that, I think Mr. Rankin and Mr. Stevens have both asked about context, or maybe Mr. Ponte's, how are other jurisdictions doing this? Another piece of context I'd like to understand is if we looked back at last year, for example, and were to have consistently applied yard averaging, what would the impact of that have been on decisions? How many decisions would have been made differently?
The last piece is more of a comment. I do agree with the third option that, and Mr. Krasner's comment that I think yard averaging is an attempt to maintain neighborhood character if a somewhat, well, debatably confusing one. You know, I like the idea of a neighborhood-specific approach to determining yard averages, but this is another question. How do neighboring jurisdictions address this? My last question is, I think next on our agenda, we'll have a more holistic conversation about single-family zoning, where I think we will have the opportunity to deal with more substantial, more important, more impactful issues. So I would want to know the level of effort required to explore number three and if that would detract from further exploration of a more holistic look at single-family zoning.
All right. Thanks. What I'll do is I'll throw in some comments and questions, and then we'll see how many of the questions staff got it down. They'll try to tackle them. And then for the ones they missed, we will remind them and then we'll get those. So my thoughts are, well, my first thought was, I'm assuming it's not totally up to us how we, what the actual solution is. I think we're just going to make sort of recommendation. I can't imagine we can just suddenly decide, hey, let's ignore this code requirement, Mr. Stevens' point. But presumably, if that's what we suggest, that that will start some ball in motion to change the code or something. But I also thought the, like Mr. Ponte's pointed out, that the rippling impact seems the most sort of dramatic of this, which is this idea that, hey, I own this house, I don't do anything. And then I wake up one day and what I can do has now changed based on what my neighbor did. I don't know. Like Ms. Weiss said, maybe there's some grandfathering clause that either already exists or could be created for that. But of course, once you do that, you get to, as Ms. Teetz points out, presumably, the point of front yard averaging is to smooth out the front of the houses. And so if you grandfather people in, then you're kind of defeating the purpose of it. My guess is that when front yard averaging was created, the main thing they had in mind was, you know, big lots, empty lots, build a new house. Let's make sure it sort of lines up with the other houses. And probably not a lot of thought was given to a bunch of tear downs and rebuilds and odd shape subdivisions that we seem to see all the time now when they create these. I mean, it's great that this diagram is for perfect rectangles, but what does this example look like when it's a bunch of 12-sided, you know, pipe stems and non-pipe stem things? But I think that's where it ends up getting really complicated. I think the porch thing is a red herring. Come on. If you can shelter it and it has columns and a roof, it doesn't count as an extension. And if it's a porch, it's a porch, but whatever. You know, I think while option three is enticing, that seems like a lot of work and also prone to tons of very specific commentary and debate. I'm not sure how successful we'd actually be with option three, although that, to me, would be sort of like the ideal option. Is you go to the places in the city where this actually matters, take a look at everything and come back and say, well, this is how this will work here and this is how it'll work over there. But even then, what you'll find, I'm sure, is nobody does some weird subdivision somewhere they hadn't thought of that create the weird situation that hadn't been contemplated. And we'll be back to where we are now. So I personally think that, I don't know. To me, it's a bigger issue. I'd love to redo it so we can do stuff like put in some requirements about lot geometry and stuff like that. That seems to be as big a problem as the yard averaging. But I think in the meantime, it seems like we actually have to do number one until the code is changed. And I think the most realistic code change would be option number two, although I think option number three would be a nice-to-have solution. With that, I'm going to throw it back to staff to see if they have answers to the questions we randomly threw out. And then after that, everyone else will have a crack at follow-up comments and questions. Does that sound good?
Sure. Okay, I think I'm gonna have to go back to Mr. Stevens' question about the city attorney issuing a memo and an opinion and then the zoning. I'm going to be honest, I can't speak for the zoning administrator. I don't know specifically his reasoning for putting things on hold, but I can only assume he wants to sort of let the planning commission provide some feedback on the yard averaging question before he starts acting on yard averaging or the memo provided by the city attorney. That's all I know. But I can take the question back to him and get responses to the planning commission, maybe perhaps for a next work session or something as to what his reasoning is. And then I think, related to that, Ms. Weiss, you asked, let's see, how many applications are being held up? I also don't have the answer to that. I asked the zoning administrator and he didn't readily have that at hand. So he gave me the average number of applications from last year. And again, I can certainly go back and see if we can dig up that number. Another question you had, Ms. Weiss, was, I'm sorry, I tried to write as quick as possible, so I might have missed things. So feel free to jump in and tell me I'm wrong. But I think another question you asked is, how many applications we approved last year would have been impacted by yard averaging? That's, is that right, Ms. Weiss?
That's right. If we were applying a different interpretation last year and then we were to apply the city attorney's guidance to use yard averaging, what would the impact have been? How many yards would have been?
Yep, understood. And I think that question is twofold. It's Action Planning Commission has taken maybe on subdivisions. And then the Action Zoning Administrator has taken, and that's on building permits and grading permits. So I think it would be a sort of a combined number. But staff can study that and bring that back as well for the next discussion. And then, did I get all your questions, Ms. Weiss? I think that's all I had written down. Grandfathering question.
Yeah, the grandfathering. And then, yes, Mr. Krasner's point, I think, and Mr. Stevens, how are neighboring jurisdictions addressing this issue?
Yep. I think that would be part of our next study to look at neighboring jurisdictions and how these things are handled. We don't have that data now. But in terms of grandfathering, we kind of discussed that among staff, but I think we'd have to sort of check in with the city attorney on that issue. Grandfathering has specific legal context that I'm not very familiar with. I'd have to sort of get legal guidance from her in terms of grandfathering. And then there's some discussion of vested rights about approved permits that didn't apply to yard averaging, that should have. So those are some questions that we'll have to sort of check in with the city attorney. So I can also bring that back, hopefully, for our next discussion. Okay.
All right. Were there other specific questions that weren't covered that people had asked or I guess new specific questions that came up? This is the free-for-all segment.
I had another question.
Go ahead, Mr. Krasner.
I guess the question was, and I know we've talked about it, but the issue of putting like a moratorium on review of infill grading plans and subdivisions. I mean, that becomes fairly significant fairly quickly. I can imagine that there are a number of, you know, applicants, landowners, citizens, anybody who are affected by that. I mean, the issue I would have is, you know, typically, things like, I mean, I don't know how often the city has done this. I mean, I am aware that, you know, there are times when, you know, you can kind of put a moratorium on new applications, you know, while you're looking to, you know, make a change to code or do something else. But, you know, I think, you know, if we go down a path of studying this and, you know, something that's going to be a more involved process to make changes to the code, you know, I think that's something that needs to be, I mean, I'm sure city council would hear that sooner than later, if there are people who are looking to build and subdivide and they're telling, and they can't, you know, for a year or more, or whatever it's going to be. So that's something, I mean, it's really, I guess, not a planning commission decision, but just something that, you know, I wouldn't want the planning commission to be blamed somehow if we were studying changes to the code for, you know, holding people up currently. I mean, that's kind of a decision that maybe is between city council and staff and the city manager as far as what they want to do. I mean, the current code is the current code. You know, what they do with that, I guess, is, again, maybe not our specific mission. But, so just to put that out there, I don't want that to dissuade anybody, you know, from, you know, on the commission for saying that, you know, we can't look at the code and look at making more significant changes. So I guess it's more of a comment than a question. But I guess I would be interested if staff has any reaction to that as far as, you know, what the thoughts are on, you know, not reviewing projects or how long would you continue that way?
Yeah. I think that's worth making clear to those of you watching at home. To the extent there's any kind of pause in it, that's not been directed by the planning commission. That would be, I assume, the zoning administrator deciding to do that. And I agree that if we want to go down the path of number three, that's going to take time. And I would think it would be a mistake to hold everything for that amount of time. But again, that's not, that's not our control. Correct?
Right. Yeah, exactly. It has to be made clear to everybody that, you know, that's not our decision or call as far as whether staff reviews things or not. You know, we, you know, even if we recommend changes to the code, you know, those don't go into effect until they're adopted. So, but what happens in the meantime? I mean, that's, right, that's not, that's not our call. We only review what comes before us and we don't really get to decide what comes before us. Other people do that. So anyhow.
Mr. Rankin, can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
So, you know, thinking about this, I think the moratorium issue, that is really between staff, the zoning administrator and the attorney. I would suggest that they not do that, that they move forward. If there's any issues of concern, they certainly can go to the BZA. That's what the BZA is for. The BZA has made plenty of determinations in the past regarding averages. I wonder as a first step, since I agree with you that number three would be difficult and we're probably talking about a multi-year process because of different neighborhoods and things like that. So we're stuck at one right now. I'm not personally ready to go to two or move averaging, but I wonder if there's a middle ground right now and that we could ask the staff to at least look at how averaging is being used in other jurisdictions and get that information at, you know, at another meeting. And that would kind of give us an idea of how we want to move forward. and get that information um at, you know, at another meeting and that would kind of give us an idea of how we wanted to move forward.
Yeah, I think uh I definitely think getting, I don't know how, how hard it is to get information about how it's done. That would be very helpful.
If someone's typing that needs to be.
Somebody's typing.
Uh, it sounds like some of my software developers with their crazy keyboards. But yeah, I think knowing what other jurisdictions do could help a lot. Um, I mean, I think the other reality here, of course, is that uh, and the reason why we run into this is that whenever front yard averaging limits the essentially the value of someone's property, they fight against it. Um, and so now, like, obviously, that's how zoning works. There's all kinds of stuff that people would do that would create more value for their property if the zone zoning stuff didn't exist. But I think the problem is there are times when it seems like well, it's a hundred percent terrible that we are not consistent with how it is applied. That just doesn't seem fair to anybody. Um, but there are times when I think what happens is it seems like the application of the front yard averaging doesn't kind of line up with the intent. And so then we figure out where someone, the zoning administrator figures, figures out ways around it. Um, but the result is it just, it comes across inconsistent and I think unfair. And then when, when there is a time when maybe it should apply, but that limits the value for the owner, they, they work hard to get around it because they want to maximize their value. So um, I would be I, I mean, it sounds like right now staff has several questions that they could go get more information on and they could do a little bit of research in terms of what neighboring jurisdictions do. I mean, Mr. Krausner, do you know in Fairfax County, is there front yard averaging?
No, there is definitely not anything like front yard averaging. Um, you know, Fairfax, what they do have obviously is many, many more zoning districts. Obviously, you know, it's, it's a different different environment, but um, yeah, they, there's nothing, there's nothing like that. There is, you know, standard, you know, front yard setbacks, except for they do have, and we can talk about this maybe more if we go down different paths. I mean, something that Fairfax um uses a lot and they've used for many decades is what they call their planned housing districts, PDH, which is planned development housing, which essentially allows folks to do kind of more, in theory, more creative, out of the box things without typical, you know, setback requirements. Um, it kind of has a density, overall density requirement. Um, but anyway, so no, but short answer is no, there's no front yard averaging um in Fairfax.
Hey, Mr. Rankin, I, I'd just make one comment. Um, having looked at most of the BZA cases from nineteen eighty-five forward that dealt with averaging, which was something like forty some cases. Not everyone who appealed it was concerned with averaging. There are some cases where they wanted their house further back, like they wanted to have a small, you know, and basically ended up with a smaller house. So um mostly what averaging, in most cases with averaging, what it did is like, it didn't allow someone to have a little bit bigger house or something like that. And I would also say that a lot of houses um that were rebuilt or infill did follow averaging um pretty much consistently up till two thousand and five. So, and then it's inconsistent. So I think that that's not fair. It's not fair to everyone who followed the code. And then that some people were allowed to get away with not following the code for various reasons. So I, you know, I, I think you have to look at it both ways and, and um, I think that two thousand and fifteen case specifically, they were looking to have their house actually end up being a little bit smaller, but further back than what averaging said it should be because they were trying to save a tree. And the BZA granted them that. So the BZA does have the ability to deal with averaging when it's not fair.
Yes. Yeah. All right.
One, one additional comment, if I might. This is Tim.
Sure, go ahead.
I, I agree that the uh neighborhood specific setback trying to come up with uh that is would be a lot of work. And I would think uh to the degree that it requires interaction with the residents of the various neighborhoods, that's going to be very difficult. Uh, for, for quite a while until uh things begin to open up again. Um, strikes me as I was reading through those two BZA uh cases that uh the process worked. Maybe uh someone who's much more familiar with the BZA process than I am can disabuse me of my confidence from my, but it, it seemed to me it worked very nicely. Here you had that situation on Forest Drive where somebody was proposing to, to build a house that would clearly have been out of sync with the other houses that were uh in the neighborhood and they all came in, shared their thoughts and the BZA thought it over, had a good discussion and said, hey, you're right. Uh, that permit shouldn't be allowed uh to do that. So uh, it's very difficult to come up with a one size fits all, but that's why we have the BZA. And I think just based on those two cases, they did a good job.
Yeah, uh, I noticed the, the vice chair of one of those meetings was a Mr. Krausner. I wonder if he has any comments on his time on the BZA and whether he thinks it worked.
You mean like whether or not variances are kind of a, a, a solution to, you know, case by case? I mean, I mean, the variance option is always there, obviously. You know, it, it, to me, you know, the variance is, is a relief valve, you know, if people truly have a hardship. I think, you know, the BZA in the city, you know, the, the rules are fairly strict for variance. I mean, obviously this, the BZA will hear things case by case and decide. Um, I think, you know, uh, it, that's not really a solution, you know, holistically. I mean, that is a one-off relief valve that can help an individual person who feels that, that the, you know, the, the lot averaging is truly you know, denying them use of their property. You know, you can't just use a variance because you don't like it, you know, at least you shouldn't. And you shouldn't get, get approval just because you don't like the lot averaging. It really have to be because it's, you know, harming you in a zoning sense and, and denying use, use of your property. So to me that, I don't know if that's really a complete solution. If we, if there's consensus that um, you know, either the lot averaging is not working or that we don't want it. Um, you know, but I think that's, I guess, the bigger decision, I suppose, if, you know, whether or not we, we, you know, want it. I, I you know, I, I expressed my opinion, but I guess it's something we need to discuss. Um, as a group, I don't know, you know, staff looking for us to, this is just a work session. I mean, I guess staff is looking for some direction from us as far as, you know, where they should, you know, put their energies towards on this. Um, so I don't know if we are even close to having some type of consensus among ourselves here, but um, to me a variance is, you know, it, it's, it's, it would, it would allow, you know, I guess some people to, to try to get relief from that section if they had an issue with it, but um, it's not really a solution.
Right. Okay. And so staff specifically asked, uh, I think they asked us to consider three options. Just so I'm clear on those, the first option is says no change. Apply front yard averages prescribed in the code. However, I mean, it may have a misunderstanding, but that would reflect some change in that it sounds like historically, the average has not always been applied. Or at least sometimes it calculated in a way that essentially makes it not applicable. Is that right?
Well, there would be no change to the code, the current code now because the city attorney found it applicable, um, specifically yard averaging from building location. So we'd have to, moving forward, apply it. So no change means the current code stays as is by moving forward, we'd apply it.
No change to the code, but a change to how we've actually been.
That is correct. Our practice, maybe.
And then number two would mean removing, you know, changing the code to remove, basically get rid of yard averaging. But that also would be different than right now because sometimes yard averaging is applied. Basically, none of your options are how things have happened prior to now.
I don't think it has to do with practice. You're correct. Uh, um,
Okay.
I, you know, I, I, practice is less of an issue now and um, there may be issues with practice, but this is about what to do with the, the yard averaging. So, yeah, you are correct. And number two would just simply remove the yard averaging requirement from the code and apply the standard R one A and R one B front yard setbacks, which is thirty and twenty-five.
Okay. And so, and so in your, if you drew a little example of this, um, well, okay, setback, building setback, but they could still build, they could still build their house fifty yards back, right?
I'm sorry?
So, so this is the confusing part, right? To me, if you had like the example that Ms. Teats gave where they wanted to build a house farther away. Like their front yard wouldn't be thirty yards, thirty feet, it would be fifty feet to save a tree.
Yes. You are correct. They, they can build far if they want to. They just can't come any closer than thirty in R one A and twenty-five in, um.
So option two, the main impact would be you could potentially have a sawtooth thing. You have this in, but, but no one is going to build a house any closer than the current standard setback, which is twenty-five or thirty feet. So unless your house already exists way far back, which is possible, uh, someone's not going to build with. And then option three would just take a lot of time and, and money because time is money.
Yes.
Can I ask a follow-up question on options two and three?
Yeah.
That those both specifically would require changes to the code, right? Which is a process unto itself, correct?
That's correct.
And so I guess my question to the planning commissioners is would we want to instigate that process for front yard averaging specifically? Or, you know, we, we've identified other
Right.
issues with our code, right?
Right. Well, the other example for number three, I mean, we, we've we figured out green, greenway downs overlay years ago and city council's never done anything with it, though I, I don't, even if we put the time and energy into number three, it's likely that we would be operating under number one for years until city council took it up. And what you're saying, Ms. Weiss, is if, if we may be uh entering into a more comprehensive review of these zoning codes, which is TBD, then obviously that could be incorporated in that process. So.
Correct. And the corollary is I personally would not want to open up that process just for yard averaging.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah. So, yeah, I mean, I think, um, I, I think my, my recommendation would be that the zoning administrator do not hold things up because options two or three are not going to happen quickly. So he's stuck with option one till, until, unless until the other two happen. And then and then we can decide whether or not we want to recommend that we go down the path of two or three. Uh, or if we're just fine with okay, we're, code is fine, we'll just go with number one. And if we're tackling zoning things for other reasons in the near future, we can obviously take this into account during that process. Does that sound, sound like what we're faced with?
Sounds good to me.
And then I would say like I you know, it seems like this is a work question. So the question is, what, what guidance do we give staff? Come back with down the road for us to make a final determination on what we want to recommend. You know, there's a couple of questions that Ms. Weiss had about, you know, how many yards would be impacted and how that would have happened over the past year or whatever. Um, and then the other big request seems to be what do our neighboring jurisdictions do, which it seems possible. The answer might be they don't have any idea what a side yard average is or yard averaging is. And so then that would necessitate help, although it'd be great to hear that. So is there anything before we wrap up, move on to the next thing? What, what guidance can we give to staff that would help us? Or, or maybe everyone already feels confident in how they would go. But if there's some bit of information that you're wishing staff would give us to help us make this decision, now's the time to ask for that because I think we'll want to make a decision the next time this comes up.
I guess one thought occurs to me that if, if staff really wants to see uh the code changed or uh some type of a revision made, that it start out with, what are you trying to accomplish? I mean, somehow if we dive into the details of this issue without really uh discussing upfront, what's the end result? What type of uh you know, residential design outcome? Are we really trying to achieve here? And if we do that, I think the details then would follow a lot easier. It's one of the reasons we're having difficulties here is, you know, what are we trying to accomplish? And, and that really hasn't been discussed very well. Maybe Ms. Teats is very, very well knowledgeable on that, but I think for, for some others, I know myself, uh, it's kind of a new issue. And uh, it doesn't link very well with the end results.
Yeah, I think it's before us now because we're trying to, you know, we, we've faced enough confusion with it, with subdivisions that we see that we want it cleared up, which for better or for worse, I think the city attorney has weighed in. Um, and clear, and at least I think would make it more clear in terms of how it's applied going forward. So then it comes to your question, Mr. Stevens, which is if we don't like that, what is, what are we actually trying to accomplish here? You know, we've heard about sawtooth, we've heard about um, you know, the whole a new house affecting and existing house, stuff like that. But that, that, that's the analysis I think we want to do if we if we're going to do anything other than number one, we have to step back and say like, okay, what is this bit of zone zoning uh restriction? What was the goal of it?
Mr. Rankin, I, I would just say I agree with that. I mean, I think we're at one, that is where we are right now until we have the time and the ability to really look at the code. And um, because we make changes here and we haven't looked at some of the other issues that we had come up with subdivisions, then we're just band-aiding the code again. And also, we all know, um, it is difficult to get on the schedule for the city council. Any kind of changes we were going to have to make would have, would need to have public meetings for us. It would need to have work sessions for us, work sessions for the council. You know, public meetings for them. And I also think it would be difficult to, I, you know, we've looked at zoning code in the past. Um, I, I mean, not me, but there was a ZOAC committee and they had, they had many public meetings with lots of public input. And I don't think we're really capable of that right now in a real, inter, interactive matter. So I, I'm not sure that this is something we, you know, I think right now that I don't think that, I think they should apply the code as, you know, the city attorney has said to apply it, as the BZA decision said to apply it, how the settlement said to apply and how the code says to apply, now Mr. Boyle himself at the one BZA meeting said to apply it. And just do that for now until we can actually get to a point where we can really look at this holistically. But I still think in the meantime, I'd like to get some information about how averaging is dealt with, is, you know, did, or did we invent it? Or did someone else invent it? Who invented this? I mean, it, it, it may be specific to us, the city of Falls Church in some manner, because the city has done lots of things that isn't normal.
Yeah.
When we all get our zoning administrated, um, uh, I'm sorry, get our planning commissioner training, the first thing I'm, we're told when you get to class usually is you're from the city of Falls Church. You guys are different. So, you know?
Yeah. So I think that's true. And I think honestly, if you asked me about this issue, you know, a couple of months ago, I would have said, hey, mostly I want it to be clear. I don't understand why it's not. Why the code isn't clear? It sounds like the code has been clarified, or at least how it should be applied is clarified. Now, if city council came to me and said, hey, do you guys like yard averaging or not? I might weigh in, but city council's not asking us that. We, we were asking, what is the deal? Why is this confusing? Sounds like that's been solved. So um, I'm personally comfortable with stigma with number one. I'm sort of like with Ms. Weiss. I'm hoping maybe we will be embarking on a more significant, more interesting review of aspects of, um, you know, single family zoning and things like that. And if so, I'm absolutely going to keep this in mind because that would be an easier thing to do if we're already doing a big thing. Um, so I'm inclined to favor number one. Um, we're not voting, this is a work session, but uh, so I guess, I guess my last call for staff requests for when we do bring this up, I guess the next time we bring it up, we'll weigh in. Is that right, staff? Yeah.
Um, sure. I think we can uh do uh more research and then at least be able to respond to those questions uh that were brought up tonight and have a second discussion.
Yeah. I mean, unless you guys are just looking for an informal, I mean, in work session, we don't usually vote on things, right? So.
No, we, well, no, we don't. I think uh mostly we were trying to get um your feedback on these three options to see if we could get consensus around one of the three. Um, I, I think in this case, we had a lot of good discussion and feedback. I'm not sure exactly where we are of the three yet, but I think I can, I can, I'll review the video and get more information.
If I'm reading the tea leaves, I, and, and, and we're going to vote on it, I would think number one might eke out a victory, but that lots of people are interested in number three, but probably not as a standalone yard averaging effort. But that's
Agreed.
Uh, all right. Anyone else have anything else to say on this? We still have a couple of things to cover, one of which is probably at least a little bit of time. All right. Well, thanks a lot for that. This has been uh an interesting um dive into zoning code, but now we're on to the housing chapter implementation report. I'm sure someone will take away. Is that why Shane is here?
Yes, that's, that'll be me. Um, so I just have a, a very brief um staff report and then um really like to just uh spend most of the time hearing from the planning commission, which items um that have been outlined as and then um, really like to just uh, spend most of the time hearing from the planning commission, which items um, that have been outlined as possible options in the report are desirable by the planning commission and maybe there are other options, um, ideas that you all have been thinking of. Um, so tonight, as the planning commission is requested to hold a work session to review the draft housing chapter implementation report. Um, this draft report is intended to be a follow-up to the twenty nineteen update of the housing chapter of the comprehensive plan. Um, of course, there were a number of action items identified in that comprehensive plan chapter. Um, but this uh, report is intended um, just to follow up on two action items from that chapter. The first being an assessment of what uh, housing the city will need to support a range of incomes in the future. Uh, and the second to identify a menu of zoning ordinance amendment options that would help to encourage a more diverse housing stock within the city. Um, so it's a fairly brief um, report. Um, it highlights some best practices um, from other um, jurisdictions. Um, and then it highlights a number of of options uh, to look at the city zoning code. Um, provisions for accessory dwelling units. Um, there is a group that's working with housing staff right now to um, develop um, an ADU uh, zoning code uh, amendment. Um, so at some point that'll be coming back before the the planning commission. Um, and then um, looking at the city's duplex regulations uh, including provisions for triplexes and quadplexes, a review of the city's cluster residence and town home districts. I'm taking another look at the city's cottage housing provisions. And this is something that had been brought up earlier this year and a work session was held um, with council back in February and and the idea was to take a more comprehensive look uh, at the city's housing regulations. Um, and then finally, the the last item highlighted in the report is um, I just doing something that would help to encourage expansion to existing structures so so that those um, structures are able to be maintained. And so that's all I really have um, in terms of the staff report. Um, but again, uh, I think the purpose of tonight was to open it up to the commission to get input on what types of things you all think would be uh, desirable and um, if there's anything else that staff is missing.
All right. Thank you for that. Uh, I think I'll do the same thing where I'll I'll run through uh, alphabetically for the first cut and then we'll circle back uh, to have a more free flowing conversation. Mr. Krasner, you have any quick thought?
All right there. Um, so, well, I mean, I'm sure other folks maybe will have, you know, some more insightful, you know, suggestions on this. I mean, um, I mean, I like a lot of the things that, you know, the the menu of options, I think we need to look at everything. I mean, as we discussed in the past, I mean, this is really where the rubber meets the road, the implementation. Try to get, you know, more affordable housing, different housing types, you know, all the missing types of housing that we don't have. I mean, our our challenge is always going to be, you know, the finite amount of land that we have and the large percentage of that land, which is, you know, developed with single-family detached units now and which, you know, I think and I I think the difficulty will be, you know, um, you know, trying to trying to make inroads and 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 deal with, you know, the inevitable conflict between, you know, allowing for more density, whether it's in the form of accessory dwelling units or um, duplexes or anything like that. And and sort of the knee-jerk reaction um, from a lot of the single-family uh, neighborhoods. But with all that said, I think we need to look at all those options. I mean, Arlington, you know, has had a lot of success. Um, well, I'd actually be curious to hear how much success they've had, but I know, you know, they're they've approved um, the ability for folks to have, you know, these detached, you know, micro units or or tiny houses, you know, in 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 single-family neighborhoods and and things like that, you know, begin to open up, you know, possibilities. But um, so, you know, I think we need to look at everything. And I think I've said, I think I've said this in the past as well. You know, the housing chapter had all kinds of great things in there and but it also highlighted the severe issues we face um, if we don't act. So, you know, we we really do need to look at, look at everything. That was that was all I had for now, if you were waiting for me.
Did we lose our chair?
Did we lose him? Well.
I'm back, I'm back, I'm back. Can you hear me?
Yeah, now we do.
I got kicked out of the meeting, but now I'm back. So I missed uh, I missed.
I I was just handing it off. Uh, that that was my bit. Um, that's, you know, that's.
All right. I see a couple that look like maybe, maybe I wasn't the only one that got kicked out. But um, if Mr. Pointes is connected, he's next alphabetically. But if he's not, we can go to Mr. Stevens and then come back to Mr. Pointes.
Yeah, can you hear me now? I think I was dropped off too. So.
Yeah, I think a few of us got dropped off. So uh, if you're, if you reconnected, I noticed that when I reconnected, I had to enable my microphone again. So go ahead, Mr. Stevens, and we'll circle back.
Sure. A couple of things. Uh, first of all, just a a somewhat minor point. On page five, where it refers to Center for New Urbanism, uh, it's actually Congress for the New Urbanism. I'm a member of that organization, so uh, so I'm familiar with the name. Uh, I'm glad to see it, the reference there, that I do really get into these issues as an organization. And so matter of fact, their executive director, Lynn Richards, lives uh, in Arlington. And in my conversations with her, she would be more than happy to come and um, uh, speak to us at some point on some of the issues that are contained uh, in this uh, in this document. Um, the other thing I just want to mention briefly at this point is uh, regarding ADUs, accessory dwelling units. I do support uh, uh, expansion of of accessory dwelling. And it's not so much as a a solution for low-income housing because I don't think we know that. I think it's a lot of issues that could be solved by ADUs. And it's not necessarily the the most important point to be able to say what we think those are. The main point, I think, is to give homeowners more flexibility and and allowing their uh, neighborhoods to to uh, progress organically. Right now, we've kind of put uh, kind of a frozen tone of uh, you know, consistency on our neighborhoods and they're not able to develop. And I think uh, freeing up ADUs will give more options to homeowners in in ways that we probably can't fully uh, comprehend or or forecast at this point. So I'll leave it at that for right now.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Stevens. Uh, we'll go back to Mr. Pointes if he's connected.
Yeah, sorry, I got dropped off somehow.
Yeah, several of us got booted off, so we're back now.
Uh, thanks. Um, I'm sorry I missed the other commissioners' um, comments. I'm uh, I I did hear Mr. Krasner's comments and I think that the I I've never actually seen an implementation report for a comprehensive plan chapter and if that's, um, we don't do this for all of the chapters, I don't think, but um, I'm glad to see it because I think this is, somebody mentioned this is where the rubber hits the road. I am curious though, so if the staff is looking for only zoning code changes or if we're looking for other, there's lots of other things the city can do, obviously. Whether it's fast-tracking, plan review, density bonuses, looking at parking, minimums. You know, there's all all kinds of different things I think that we could, that we could get done beyond just the zoning code changes that's in here. And all the, all that is is fine. I have no, no comments on that. I do think though, we should, that um, what I have seen elsewhere, uh, I've never seen it actually implemented, but I've heard people talking about it. But I guess what Mr. Krasner was talking about, including a section on understanding NIMBY opposition to um, to some kind of affordable housing or or zoning changes. Um, I do think that that is a one of the key issues and those, I don't mean with means we need to ram things through. But I think some kind of implementation report that doesn't deal with that element, which is, which is critical, um, is going to be challenging. So it really, it's it's a lot of knowledge building and 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 outreach and and things like that. If we're really serious about it, I think that's what's going to, that's what's going to be needed in addition to those other, those other pieces. So um, those are all the comments, just that, you know, if we're going beyond zoning changes, other things that we can include. And I would definitely want to see something about a strategy around NIMBY opposition. Thanks.
All right. Thank you for that. Uh, Ms. Teets, do you have any thought?
Yes, and and I just want to say that I agree with Mr. Pointes that that we need to do more things beyond the zoning ordinance or because when you look at these, I don't really see them bringing about affordable housing. Um, you guys may remember, we did actually have a speaker from Arlington County from their housing um, department, I forgot his title. And he was, we asked him about the um, ADUs because they had the new code and he said that they weren't getting, I I think he said they may not have gotten any applications and they were actually going back to look at the code to try to find a way to make it more usable. And one of the things, like, maybe they had a few, but they didn't have very many. And I had asked him if he felt the ADUs, the accessory dwelling units, would actually be affordable. And he said absolutely not, that they didn't expect them to be affordable at all. And I think we all know that if it's like a two-bedroom ADU and and a nice neighborhood, it's probably not going to be affordable. And, you know, we recently had a duplex, a newer duplex in the city, and I think they they both were on the market for over a million dollars apiece. So duplexes aren't affordable, our townhouses aren't affordable, the current ones. I don't think a new one would be unless we we find a way to make sure that what's being built is being built affordable. I mean, if you if you build townhouses, like most of Whittier, now Whittier has some affordable units in. If you've seen the affordable units or been in them, I have, um, they're very different from the rest of the units and that's part of why they're affordable. So I think that, you know, just the, and the cottages, which is listed in here, they're not affordable. So I think if we're going to talk about affordable housing, it has to go beyond just the zoning changes or there has to be more things involved in the zoning that would lead to a product that is affordable. And and I think that, like Mr. Pointes said, there's other things that we need to be listed and because I just don't, I mean, I see a list of these zoning changes and and some nice things about other places like Minneapolis and Norfolk. But I don't see the things that we would actually have to do to make sure we got more affordable housing.
All right. Thank you for that. Uh, Ms. Weiss, any thoughts from you?
Um, yes, I have several, but I have a question first that Ms. Shafer, you wouldn't mind, if you wouldn't mind answering um, directly, that would help um, guide some of my additional comments. Um, can you just tell us, Ms. Shafer, um, the intended audience of the implementation report, is this just for planning commission? Is this for city council, housing commission? Who else do you anticipate will read this?
Um, so it would both be for a planning commission and city council and and also presented to the housing commission to get their feedback. Um, and I know several commissioners have have already commented on um, whether this was intended to just be for the zoning ordinance or or to look at other um, policy questions. And and this item really was just following up on the action item from the housing chapter of, let's take a look at the city zoning regulations and see what we can do to make, uh, to encourage a more diverse uh, housing stock. Of course, there's, there's plenty of other actions that will need to be taken in order to uh, address the affordability issue. But I think what staff was was looking at was trying to figure out what could be done just to get a more diverse housing stock, um, which would help in in some ways and and having a little bit more affordability.
Okay, that's helpful. Um, thank you. Um, so I have a few comments and questions on the document. Um, the first is, um, thank you. It's it's good to see it. You've got some nice ideas here. Um, some more, some nitty questions. Um, number one, on page three, I think it is, uh, page three, in the left-hand column. Um, we state the, there's a line that says the number of households within the city are projected to increase to nine thousand three hundred eleven. So I'd like to understand, is that um, inclusive of the seventy-five thousand missing housing units mentioned on page, page two? In other words, page two says, um, we need um, seventy-five thousand more units beyond what has been forecasted for the entire region. So I just want to understand what our fair share of that missing seventy-five thousand units are and if that's incorporated in our demand forecast or no. Um, and I'm happy to keep going through the questions if that's easiest. Um, or you can stop me, Ms. Shafer, feel free. Um, the second question is on figure one, future housing demand. I'd like to see that disaggregated, the one hundred percent AMI figure, I'd like to see that disaggregated um, to other portions of one hundred percent plus because I'm curious about how much demand is in the one hundred percent area versus one hundred twenty-five, one hundred fifty. Um, and I'm also interested in understanding, when we look at that housing demand, do we understand the composition? How many in each slice of uh, income slices um, are families? Um, you know, what what's housing size do we anticipate needing? Um, another question I have is um, City of Norfolk. Um, I'd be interested in understanding how they use their pattern book, how they incentivize use of it. And it was hard for me to understand from this report. Um, on the City of Minneapolis, Minnesota report, um, I'd like to see in, uh, you know, another draft. So I'm giving you some comments here for for future draft, I think would be interesting. And then I'd also, you know, like to sort of share my thoughts on where we should go with this. Um, I'd like to see more detail on what City of Minneapolis actually included. They included a pa- a package of five ellacies, including replacing single-family zoning with allowing triplexes and duplexes in the same place. Um, and to Ms. Teet's point, they they did a few other things to Mr. Pointes's. So they, um, I think they eliminated uh, they encouraged more density near transit stops by allowing greater heights near transit. They eliminated off-street parking minimums. Um, they uh, uh, included an inclusionary zoning policy that required new apartments to have ten percent of units for moderate-income households. They funded affordable housing at the same time. So I think having a comprehensive understanding of those sort of five, at least listing those five policies here would be helpful. Um, and then I think bigger picture. Um, I think we should situate this discussion in the current time. And I think there are two key pieces of information that I think need to be considered in the context of this report. So number one, uh, I think we need to just specifically put a fine point on um, the racial justice um, that we're all thinking about and talking about much more now. Um, I'd like to see, um, you know, in our vision statement, we talk about having an inclusive community. But in the City of Falls Church update um, that the planning director presented to us, I think last, or May, um, our city has gotten more white in the past decade. And I think, you know, maybe less black over the past twenty years. It's hard for me to look at this chart from the May twentieth um, statistics. I think we need to add a piece of the analysis that overlays racial diversity with single-family zoning. I know there's a dot map that shows um, zoning versus racial composition that we might want to include in here just to specifically identify that this is an issue here in the City of Falls Church. And we may also want to add a paragraph um, on the history of exclusionary zoning in the City of Falls Church. I don't think that's in our comprehensive plan chapter. And I think now is the time to just put a fine point on that. This connects with systemic racism and we should look at that. The last piece, and thank you for your patience, uh, well, two last pieces. As one, I think we also need to really understand the financial impact uh, because changing housing has a serious impact on property taxes, service provision. And so it'd be nice to understand the financial impact of some of these policies. And um, to the point about public engagement, um, you know, we we need a robust, uh, I think, public engagement process on any of this. Um, so those are a lot of comments and questions. Um, I hope that's helpful. Um, those up there because I've probably taken more than my fair share of time.
That's quite all right. Um, but there are a handful of specific questions that maybe could be addressed now.
Yeah, I can, I can weigh in um, quickly on on some of those. Um, first, the the question of whether that ninety-three hundred new households um, also includes the housing that the region is expected to um, to need. Um, so that is the the households that are expected to be here in the city. Um, so housing to support those households is, it uh, those households are are included in what we would need more housing for. Um, in terms of the chart on on the right of that page, um, we could look into uh, whether we have that broken out over the one hundred percent AMI range. I know that that. I know that that data had been pulled together when the demographics chapter was done. So I would have to check on, on whether we have that information available. I'm not sure if it's, if those households broken out by AMI, if they have that in terms of what those households would look like, in terms of number of people. But I would have to check back on that information and then follow up. And I think those were the, the main questions, unless I missed any, Ms. Weiss. The other things were, were comments, and I think they were all helpful comments to include in, in the next iteration of the report and moving forward.
Thanks for those answers. I'll have a few comments and then we can check in to see if anybody has updated comment. I think, two things that were brought up are really important, the nimbyism, I think are actually related, but the nimbyism thing and the, Ms. Weiss mentioned the cost. And then also, Ms. Teague's mentioned that just diversity in housing stock does not equal, I think everyone realizes this, affordable housing. And so my big concern is, especially considering the, you know, the racial justice and equity things that are, have been brought to light recently, is that for, for this to work, you know, like, let's get rid of single-family zoning. Okay, that, that's just not, like, we, we have to, we have to address it all, the nimbyism, all that, head-on from the beginning, or it's not going to work. Because reality is, it will be very hard and there will be trade-offs to getting what I think a lot of people want, including me, and I'm willing to make those trade-offs. But we have to make sure that people understand that upfront. Because if we go, go down a path of zoning ideas and then, and then get near the end, and this has happened in the past with affordable housing, we get very close to executing on something and then the actual overall cost of it becomes apparent and then the support disappears. So I think all of this stuff, the sooner we can address the hard issues, like the nimbyism resistance and how you actually deal with that, and the potential impact on the tax rate, now that affects affordability in other areas, and the potential impact on the cost of services like pools, and how we're going to pay for that, the better, because then it has a much better chance of succeeding. But I think if we go down, if we focus just on the end goals and, and worry about the details later, we, we probably will not be successful. So I would love for all of these things to address those hard issues head-on from the beginning. Because I think we can, I think we can be successful if we do it, if you put it that way. So that's, you know, in terms of the, that's my big picture comment on it. You know, I think my goal would be to have a diversity of human beings in the city, which I assume means a diversity of housing options. And I would prioritize diversity in families. I would love for my kids to go to school with a more diverse group of kids. But how we get there, I'm not exactly sure. I know it's going to be tough, but it's going to be more than just tweaking the zoning code. It takes money and value generation other areas like density and height. You know, we've seen, we've had some success, I think, with our, redeveloping some of our underproducing commercial areas for mixed use, both in terms of revenue generation and diversifying our, our population. I mean, it may not be the diversity that we necessarily want, but like, 10 years ago, we didn't have very many 20-somethings living in apartments in the city, now we do. And I think that helped us afford some of our more expensive services in that time. But I think strategies like that on a bigger scale over time can hopefully get us the goals that we were talking about, but we can't. And I think we just talk about tweaking the zoning and getting where we want to be. Those are my comments. Do we have follow-up comments or questions, anyone? This is where you unmute and start talking, that's how you get. It's that part of the meeting where I'm like, am I muted and no one? Am I still in this meeting?
Well, I feel like I said a lot, but since I was hearing crickets, I'll say a bit more. I, I personally would be very supportive of elevating this on our work plan. And I think in our next discussion, we see it on our, you know, I think in one quarter, I think this is more than a one-quarter effort. And I would like to, you know, see if we can spell out what the process would be to explore improvements or changes to our zoning that would drive more diversity, recognizing that zoning is not the only means doing this. And I guess, my question to staff is, are you looking for input on, of the four, I think there were four, of the best practices that you shared? Are you looking for input from us in terms of which policies we're interested in exploring? What would be helpful?
So I think it was more within the, the section for the zoning ordinance amendment opportunities. Which of those seemed most desirable to the commission? Or were there any other items that maybe you guys had in, in your heads already that would be helpful for the city? And I think we've, we've gotten some, some feedback a little bit already on, on things to look at and take in center.
Yeah, I think that, like I mentioned, I think that the challenge, of course, you know, like using the accessory dwelling unit example, there seems to be a lot of interest in that because it would create another housing type. But we don't seem to have much data on realistically the impact of, if those units existed, the impact of the demographic of the city, for example. You know, if that doesn't really move the needle in the direction, directions that we want, then is that, is that a useful, useful way to go? Like, what are the, what are the costs or the downsides of that? Could we be considering something else? So that's, I guess that's my question, is for all the zoning ideas, like, how do we get the full picture? I know, not an easy answer to that question, but.
I think staff was looking for which of the zoning options we wanted them to pursue, right? So, and I, I think they're all good. I don't have, I don't have a preference for one of them. I think we do, I think to, to the chair's point, I think we need all of them.
Yeah, I would say pursue all of them by getting more information about the actual impact and whether or not they, yeah, how they've actually moved the needles on our goals. But I do think to Ms. Weiss's point, I, you know, we may be in a moment in time when a big effort like this can actually be successful. Whereas, you know, six months ago, maybe we thought, hey, we'll spend a couple of meetings talking about this, but it's not really going to go anywhere because it's such a heavy lift and it's hard to get people to make big changes like that. But maybe it's now actually possible. And I'm, I'm personally excited about the Planning Commission's opportunity to put some pressure on City Council or at least give City Council support. I don't even know where they, where they necessarily stand on this. Maybe they're looking for, looking for pressure to help them take it up as well. But I would, I would strongly favor taking up a critical look at it from the lens that Ms. Weiss has outlined.
Yes, this is Ms. Teague, and I agree, because it's, I'd love to see information about locality that used these that actually ended up with more diverse and affordable housing and also more equity in the housing. Because I, I'm just not sure how any of these are going to get us, you know, we'll get more diverse housing, but I don't think we're going to get affordable housing. I'm not sure if we're going to get housing equity with these different zoning choices. And, and so it would be good to see how, is, is some localities, were they able to use some of these or, or one of these and actually end up with more affordable housing? Also, I guess, I'm not sure if this is the right place for it, but should we not be also pushing the city to make sure that we are gathering the funds that are going to need, that we're going to need to keep the affordable housing on Ellison Street? My understanding, our government contract's going to come up on that and we're going to need like a couple million dollars or something to put in for the government to keep it affordable. And to me, like, that's our, that should be our number one housing thing right now. How do we make sure that we keep the Ellison Street complex, the fields there? How do we keep that and keep it affordable and keep the government credit? So I, I just want to mention that because, I mean, if this is, that should be in here because that is really, really important.
Yeah, I totally agree. And for example, just take this duplex regulation. We tweak the duplex regulations, we get a lot more duplexes. They're a million dollars each, they're not affordable, a chock full of school kid. That drives up our school costs, that drives up our tax rate. Suddenly, we have a diversity of housing choices, we have duplexes, and it's actually more expensive for everybody. But like, that's what I'm talking about, like, how do we, when does that analysis happen? Or how does it happen? Or maybe I'm, maybe I'm wrong and, and it would work great.
So maybe this really becomes more of a discussion as the cities, as the Planning Commission is looking at, at your work plan, thinking about taking a more comprehensive look at single-family zoning as, as well as other housing policies that the Planning Commission would weigh in on?
Yeah.
Agreed.
Because to me, the, just a quick stab at the, the successful strategy would be to say something like, hey, if you can build affordable duplexes over here, then we'll let you build this other thing that has value over there. Like, that's the market way, or city comes up with a bunch of money, which is always hard to do in recent. But that, that's, that's, to me, the part that's missing here is that just letting someone build a duplex isn't going to help us, I don't think, unless, unless there's some incentive or some requirement that that duplex is affordable.
This is where I think it's important, so we're not just looking at, again, I know that the charge in front of us today is, is the zoning changes, that's what staff was directed to do. But this is where all those other pieces around parking and density and height and those incentives also come in. They all, they all designed to work together, and I think it's hard to, to do one without the other.
Yeah, totally. Three of that hundred percent.
One other thing, it's not a zoning bill, but I think it might help the issue, is some more discussion on the micro-units. For example, that are being proposed at West End. I know the developer kind of took the lead on that. But it might be good to have somewhere in a city document our interest in, in that type of, of housing that would indeed be somewhat more affordable.
Yeah. I mean, if nothing else, what we, what we should know now is that normal zoning code is not going to create equitable situations for people. We gotta, we gotta come up with a new approach. All right. I, I'm worried where all these work session items are not coming up with solid guidance for staff.
Well, so I, as I, as I mentioned before, and, oh, Ms. Weiss to you.
No, I was just going to say, I, I think turning to the work plan and starting to identify, what's our top priority in the remaining six months of the, this calendar year? And if this is it, you know, how can we lay out a work plan over the coming months that helps us understand what are all the options available to us? What are the impacts? And what kind of process can we, should we put in place to catalyze a broader discussion of how to diversify housing and diversify our community in Falls Church, looks like?
Well put. Do we need to cover anything else before we move on to work plan?
I think that's all from the staff side, so as long as no other commissioners have any comments.
All right.
You know what, actually, I do have one more comment, which is, I guess, if you're revising this implementation report and sharing it with City Council and Housing Commission and others, could you perhaps add a section at the end or the beginning that says, you know, I, I don't know if Planning Commission can recommend, because we're in work session here, but just indicate the feedback of the Planning Commission, that there is appetite for a holistic review of housing options and related policies that would help diversify our housing and community?
Yeah, so if we, if we do have this before City Council, generally, the, the way we, staff has liked to present that information is to have a summary of comments from the Planning Commission and staff responses so that all of that is captured. So I think that would, that would capture this conversation.
Okay.
And so you can either do that from this work session or you capture those notes and we approve it in some future meeting? I mean, I, I trust you guys to figure that out.
Yeah, I think, I think we could capture it from this work session.
Okay, great.
Just very quickly, do we do, just out of curiosity, do we do implementation chapters for the other chapters in the comprehensive plan? Or is this unique to just housing?
I don't believe there have been any that were done. So I think, I think what staff was looking to do is that the, the Housing Chapter kind of generally said, let's take a look at the zoning ordinance and see what we can do to diversify housing. And so the purpose of this report was, you know, to follow up on that and, and lay out all the options.
All right. So it sounds like future chapters, we should incorporate things that trigger these sorts of implementation reports. All right, unless there's other comments, let's go get to this last thing, the work plan. And I, I think Mr. Stoddard joined us, if he wants to weigh in on this, but.
Yes, I did chime in, but obviously wanted to let the staff, who were so well-prepared for their items, take on those conversations. And I, and I'm really proud of the work that the staff has done while working remotely. I think our IT staff has done a great job to provide us with tools. And it really is something that to see our morale sort of carry through, even when people aren't able to sort of meet and chat in the hallways as usual. But that point aside, in front of you tonight is a work session item is an update on the Planning Commission's work plan. This has been discussed by the Commission in the last couple of meetings, the understanding that business as usual has obviously changed. Time items aren't moving forward as they had been expected. And of course, we've had some shifts in priorities as, as development applications have, have been applied for. And so this is a first cut that staff has provided on the work plan items previously, what's happened since that time, and some thoughts about what might, what might be coming up going forward. So the request is, is to get a sense of the group, or to have a conversation at least, about what is important to the Planning Commission. Not that any of them are not unimportant, but rather, in terms of importance, where does council want to see, or Planning Commission want to see staff putting most of its effort in the remainder of this calendar year? And probably even into the, to the next several months of, of the following calendar year.
All righty, can't wait for this calendar year to be over. All right, so everyone's looked at, we, we've got two plans, right? We've got the currently approved plan and then we've got this draft plan. I just think everyone's taken a look. Anyone want to just jump in and comment?
It appears to me that the, that the, the new one is fine. I did see that the, under site plans and subdivisions, it's talking about PC and Plan and Director Action in second quarter. And, I mean, I think we're discussing it, but I don't think we're going to have action, per se. But I don't know, I just thought that action didn't seem like the right word there. It might be discussion and then discussion in Q3 and maybe action in Q4 at best.
For the West Falls Church?
Well, for land development, where it's the site plans and subdivisions. I think that's us talking about zoning changes and how things are done. This whole code thing we're talking about, like, I don't think we're going to be doing anything anytime soon because we're going to need public meetings to do it, that actually have the ability for the public to really discourse with us.
Just to clarify the question, I think, Commissioner, it sounds like you're, you're talking about the line in the land development section, the second line down says site plants and subdivisions?
Yeah, exactly. I, I thought that was, is that related to what we've been talking about, trying to? Yeah, exactly. I, I thought that was, is that related to what we've been talking about trying to update some of the zoning code related to that or?
No, that was meant to be just a routine development.
Oh, okay. I'm so sorry. Because I saw that and I was trying to figure out what it meant. Okay, then I guess it's fine.
It's just kind of a placeholder that, that that'll be an activity that you'll be consistently doing.
Okay, nope, then, sorry. I wasn't sure about that.
Yeah, there's a, there's a line further down. I think it's on the last page of the document that tries to capture the discussion tonight. Uh, and I think you can see the way it's draft. There it is, that top line that's showing now. Uh, where it shows that what's occurring is a, is a PC work session. Right. And it's, it's the first day of quarter three, so there it is. Uh, and so that's capturing sort of what we have. And then the idea was to get a sense of the group tonight. Uh, and decide which of these items to try and move forward and get on the, the commission schedule again.
Okay, that makes more sense. Sorry. I didn't see the, I didn't see the review thing down there. I had looked at a couple of pages and I just couldn't figure out what the site plan subdivision was. Um, one other question on Greenway Downs, is that, isn't that kind of done? Didn't we kind of get the, the, the input from council that they didn't think we needed to do it? So it's kind of dead in the water now?
Uh, yeah. Ms. Baisemore, if you could go up one page. There we go. Yeah. So the, the status report on that is, is that, uh, uh, planning staff did bring it up to council. Uh, as staff's reporting here, there was, there was modest interest. Um, and so if this is something that is of importance to the commission, uh, staff can look for other ways to, to, to engage the council on that item. Maybe this is where, um, you know, a member of the planning commission could, could liaise with someone on council. But you're right, absent, um, um, a new push from the planning commission, I don't think there's going to be action on that.
Yeah. So the main question to me, based on what we just talked about, is right now, review of single-family development regulations, which maybe we could expand that into this bigger sort of issue is just this one quarter that started today. But it seems like if we're really going to tackle that, it's going to be a longer effort.
Yeah, I think, um, just to make, in case folks aren't aware, the city was awarded a grant from Virginia Housing Development Authority, BHDA, to look at zoning updates specific to accessory dwelling units, and that effort is underway. With staff from, from Housing and Human Services, working in coordination with the Housing Commission to move that along. So that will be an item that I think will be coming up in front of the commission as well as council. That, that does highlight, I guess, one of the things I was thinking about listening to the discussion that, that each of these pieces of the zoning ordinance could, if we're looking for a detailed analysis, take years to update. So that would be a pretty long time in the making. And I'm sure the groundwork for the efforts in Minneapolis and Oregon took a, took a lengthy amount of time. So I think there should be consideration for the effort involved and whether this is something that the group really wants to move forward with.
Well, anything that takes years to do, gotta get started at some point. But I mean, that's a good point. Like, what, what, what are we actually talking about? Like, the tip of this iceberg? You know? 9:30, I don't know how much we're gonna do, but like, it'd be interesting if, as a first step, staff could help sort of dig in on what we're talking about here, which is potentially overhauling. Well, I think we're talking about two things. For me personally, I'm thinking like, how do we potentially overhaul at least somebody's parts of zoning, but also in conjunction with other city policies that would allow us to create truly diverse, both in terms of form, but more importantly, uh, cost housing in the city in order to increase the diversity in our demographic. You know, only part of that's, I mean, ultimately, a very small part of that is planning commission work, it's mostly city council work, but uh, if the city, if the planning commission can, I mean, it didn't work very well with Paper Street or Greenway Downs, but if we could somehow be a thorn in the side of city council, maybe that, maybe that will help get the ball rolling. And I guess that's what I'm trying to understand, like, it's cool, we have a grant to look at, if it's a dwelling unit, but I don't know, that doesn't, barely scratches the surface on what we really want to look at.
Can we, just to add to that, can we, could staff maybe sort of compile the mechanisms available to the planning commission that would impact diversity of housing supply?
Our main mechanism is recommending things to city council, but yeah.
Well, we have zoning, right? We can recommend, I mean, you're right, we can recommend anything, but I guess we, we get a bite at the CIP. Um, we don't budget for affordable housing currently. You know, what, what are the decisions?
Right. I'm just saying, even if the IP is just an advisory.
Right, right. I know.
What are the normal, what are the normal things that we are involved in that we could help clarify priorities from our perspective? You know, I'm hopeful the council will, would gladly have the pressure coming from us. And, and if they are up for it, even if it takes years, Paul, obviously, you know, planning commission would be a big part of the bike work.
Yeah. And I didn't mean to say that these things aren't worthwhile. Obviously, uh, communities are pursuing these things because they're worthwhile, that there is the region-wide effort that was gaining some real steam, uh, prior to March around this idea of, of making sure the region's housing supply keeps up with demand, that I think, one of the things that I really noticed in the, in the research that was being done around that effort is that, uh, for several years in a row, the region undersupplied housing by about 10,000 units a year. And so when you think about the, the compounding impact of that, that if every year the region is 10,000 short in new units, a lot of that would, would play into.
The lack of affordable housing.
Because, because of course, the, the folks with more money are the ones who are going to buy the units. Uh, and that's how we end up with a shortage. I think it's also related to why you see some older properties being acquired uh, and then converted into, um, higher rental units. Because there's such a value in a unit that's already entitled, the entitlement process is, is, uh, difficult to get through. And so for folks who are, um, looking for, um, uh, housing suppliers are, are seeing sort of acquiring older properties uh, and, and renovating them as an attractive option.
Yeah. And I'm certainly not an expert on this. But part of me has to, sort of just feels like, sure, back in March, we had this idea, like, we're going to have a big shortage because there's going to be a bunch of these Amazon workers making 150K a year and they need a place to live and that's going to drive up the prices. And so some sort of trickle-down impact on affordable housing, but I don't know. I, I sort of feel like that's just, that's just the same old way we've tried to solve this problem. If we built all that housing for those rich Amazon people, is it, is it really, is it really actually going to work in terms of making affordable? And again, this isn't at all a criticism of what you just said, but I agree a hundred percent. But that's how it's been going. But I, I, I just wonder, and obviously Little Tiny False Church is not going to magically solve that problem uh, on, on our own. But I, I just, I don't know. It, it's a little discouraging, I'm sure for everyone, but to, I, I don't know. I, I think sometimes looking back at how we've been trying to solve the problem is maybe not the way to go, but, uh, but to me, I guess the question in the moment right now for our work plan is what, how much time can we allocate for this kind of effort? Realizing that part of it is just seeing if the ball gets rolling with the council.
Well, there were some questions I thought that were raised in the previous discussion about, um, you know, what are the connections or how strong are the connections between, uh, diversity of housing type and then diversity of households? That's certainly something, um, I don't know that, that city staff could, could do independent research on that, but, but I'm sure we could reach out to people who have uh, and, and get some feedback on that. So to the extent that there are, you know, requests or information for, uh, best practices or what's happened in other jurisdictions, I think we could probably reach out to folks who have already done that work, uh, and bring that back to the false church conversation.
Is there anything on our work plan that is optional and that could fall off because time is limited? And we want to prioritize?
Yeah. Ms. Baisemore, if you could go to the, to the first sheet.
I mean, on the, if you look at the first page, I mean, most of the stuff for this quarter and next quarter are like active developments. So it seems like other than the facilities chapter and utilities chapter, and then the community character chapter, everything, everything else is sort of like coming at us whether we want it or not.
Well, and right-of-way standards. I guess what I'm asking is, can we postpone? And I, I feel like, recognize that's a weighted question, but can we postpone the comprehensive chapter updates? Can we postpone right of way? Because I, I personally would support an effort to fill all of our open space with exploring what we can really do in housing.
Well, and that, right. And that's sort of my, related to my question, which is what, what are we talking about? Like, as we get, spend all of our meetings talking about it as a, as the seven members of planning, which I don't know that that's effective. So to me, the question is, yeah, if we postponed the right-of-way design thing, does that free up staff time to do a specific thing related to this bigger picture zoning question? I don't know.
Also, this, this, this part of the conversation, you guys said, one of my, one of the things I'm worried about here is that we're going to, because time is limited, that we're going to just take bites of this? And if we just spend all of the time we have on an ADU ordinance, for example, that's gonna, and whether or not that's successful or not, I think there's going to be a feeling, well, we, we've, we've gave it the office. Right? Or we solved that problem. Then we're not going to take the comprehensive look that I think we've talked about here tonight that we all, that we need. So I thought I'd be in favor of, as Ms. Baisemore said, carving out as much time as we can, uh, for a comprehensive look at all this.
It works for me. I'm just, I'm just, I want to make sure it makes sense, you know? I mean, I, I don't know if the people that would be investigating this are the same people that would be doing the other things or how that, how that even worked.
Staffing is always flexible. Some of it is a little bit more coordination because of the number of, um, the number of departments and the number of boards involved to, to really dig into these housing issues. I think right-of-way design was seen as something that was, um, relatively straightforward. That the city's already had a discussion on streetscape standards. And so there was, um, I think it could be a fairly light action um, to clarify things like lane widths, um, uh, the width of tree planting areas, widths of sidewalks. And I think that would be helpful for things like subdivisions that come forward so that there is a, a standard set of widths for staff to be looking for. Um, so that could be a relatively quick fix. And since there are things that, that are generally happening anyway, just with some variation, I think that would be a relatively clean item. Uh, the, the, the housing, the housing report, I think, um, what's being raised tonight is this idea of, um, a wider look and.
Paul, your audio just cut out for me.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, is this any better?
Very slightly.
Uh-oh.
That's good. Uh-oh was good.
Okay. Well, I'll try to, I'll try to use that volume.
You're good now.
So I think we can do it. I think we've got to be a little bit cautious about how much we can do and how much independent research city staff can do versus how much we can rely on, um, cases from other places and what that might mean for the city. Uh, I think, you know, none of these things are going to be perfect predictors of what would occur. But certainly, we'll look at, um, sort of what's likely or possible.
All right. So what, what is that for this work? What do people think?
The, I guess the other thing I'll throw out, uh, sorry to interject, the, the public facilities and utilities chapter, since there already has been kickoff meeting, of course, with the planning commission, uh, and there is staff work underway, including a, a good conversation with, uh, library staff, housing staff, uh, public work staff, uh, the environmental programs coordinator. Uh, I think there's a value in, in keeping that moving forward because it is already several months in. And it does speak to some issues that are pertinent to the city, related to things, uh, like, uh, anticipated stormwater needs, sanitary sewer needs, um, some of the core infrastructure pieces, uh, that keep a, uh, city operating.
I, I really agree. That's, that's important.
The, the other long-range planning item that's on there is the, um, I think the West Falls Church Small Area Plan is also on there. Ms. Baisemore, if you could go down. Here somewhere. Did we lose the West End Small Area Plan?
It's up at the top with action in, uh, this quarter.
Oh, on West Falls Church, sure. I think that, that, you know, there have been a lot of questions about how does West Falls Church, uh, relate to uh, other areas. Of course, um, there was just a, a work session at the planning commission's last meeting, I think. Because that's as far along as it is, um, I think the intent would be to keep at a minimum those two future planning items going, the smaller area plan and the, the facilities chapter. I think otherwise, I think staff wouldn't necessarily have any strong recommendations about any of the future planning items. Uh, of course, anything where, where someone has paid an application fee to have their, their project reviewed, I think, I think, uh, we probably owe the applicant, um, you know, if they're in expedient process.
Yeah, I agree with that. So it sounds like staff is saying, hey, it'd be great to finish the West End Small Area Plan and the facilities and utility chapter. We probably have to deal with the various special exceptions and whatnot that are in front of us. Not slated till Q1 of year, the community character interference design chapter, so we can kind of drag our feet on that or decide on that later. Right-of-way design, seems like we could punt on that. And so then that, so basically, all we're deciding about, it, it sounds like staff is saying, hey, the community character and design chapter, haven't done anything on that yet, we could reschedule that. And the right-of-way design, nothing really has happened yet, right?
Mm-hmm. That's correct.
But other things would, would potentially be inefficient to deviate from the plan at this point.
Correct. Um, that's one of the, that's one of the things, um, that often happens with some of these items, right? Since they are, you know, nine-month or 12-month items. And because the, the final action is, is a council action, it's, it's hard to do, um, sort of any sort of lesser deliverable. So it's, it's, it's hard to, to chop these up into, into smaller pieces.
Yeah. So my, my, my feeling is, okay, fine, we'll do all that stuff between now and our next meeting or, or whatever, like, if the direction we gave staff was, hey, all available time that hasn't been sort of committed to these other things, if we wanted to dedicate that to this housing issue, what would that look like? Like, could you guys think about what that would look like anyway?
Yeah, we could do that.
And then.
It sounds like where we were from the previous discussion was really in the, in the sort of, uh, requirements or data gathering phase about, you know, what are the other questions, right? It's, it's, it's one thing to think about how would you mechanically allow these things in the zoning ordinance, but I think there were questions about what are other tools, um, that, uh, either the city or the planning commission has available? What would be the financial impacts of any of these changes? What would be the effectiveness of any of these changes? I, the, the goals I were, I was hearing was, um, I guess a diversity of incomes, a diversity of, uh, I guess, race, household composition?
Yeah. Yeah.
So I think we could certainly, I think, planning staff could look at any work that's already been done on that and try to compile that.
Yeah, I mean, if I were the king of Falls Church, and I could just do whatever I want, I would go out and look at other places that have done things that have worked, in terms of increasing the diversity of their housing options and households, like we talked about. I would then hire some smart people to figure out, like, okay, would, how would those strategies work in a place like Falls Church, which is dramatically different than Minneapolis or Norfolk or any of the other places, but like, whatever, like, how would they work differently? And then, and then if the, you know, seeing our end goal, having looked at how people have tried, how those things might work here, contemplate what might Falls Church have to do to make it work, which in my mind is something like, hey, we might have to build a couple of high-rises in order to generate enough value for a developer to require them to build housing in a way that can be affordable in a realistic way, stuff like that, like, I don't know, like, put all those pieces together and then figure out if the community supported that strategy. That's just me pit-balling, I mean, obviously, there's a much more rigorous academic way to go about it, but that's the scale of what I'm thinking, it's not just going to be like, hey, we looked in Minneapolis, did this thing with the zoning, let's just do that, because we're, you know, very different places and it might not work out the same way here. But the first step probably is to look at what other people have done and how mechanically that works, you know, what were the different areas and differences with this situation.
I'm afraid some of that stuff is so new, you're not going to get a whole lot of results from Minneapolis so far, not going to get a whole lot of results from Norfolk so far.
That's true, and so maybe it's just ideas for things to try, because even if you had the results, I don't know how applicable they would be, being inside the Beltway, you know, all the things that we know about, like, you know, Norfolk is not going to have the same sort of demands as, you know, housing inside the Beltway would be.
The, I will throw out that, you know, some of these things are sort of policy initiatives to try and provide for more equity in housing opportunities. The other thing, you know, some of this could be cleaning up some of the implementation of what the city already has on the books, so there's, I think, some frustration about pipe stems and subdivision configurations and how lot lines get drawn. Some of this could be, you know, instead of trying to regulate away what the community doesn't want, instead regulate in what the community does want. So, for example, adjustments to the RC, the RC, the minimum acreage on that is such that those are going to be pretty rare, if, you know, not non-existent going forward. But if that were seen as sort of the alternative way to see a pipe stem subdivision go forward, then having it within the RC zone would allow for a coordinated design discussion. So some of this could also be some of those cleanup items, you know, if there are concerns about front yard averaging, some of those mechanics could be cleaned up, while some of the, because those really wouldn't have cost implications, as we raised earlier, because it's, you know, more of the same, but with the look that the community's interested in, where some of these are their, other sort of weightier topics, might take longer to resolve.
An inventory of low-hanging fruit up to the toughest solutions, I think, would be terrific.
Yeah, that might be a place to start in terms of what's a mechanical fix to what's going on versus, you know, what would really be a sea change for the community.
Yeah, I think that'd be fine, I guess, I guess what I was saying is, I don't think we need to commit everything for all time at this point.
Sure.
But I want to, I want to start whatever ball rolling we can and see, you know, see, I would love for, in future meetings, for it to be like, okay, here are the different paths we could take, some low-hanging fruit, some much harder, some basically I think it's impossible, but this is a path, sort of thing, that we can have some sense of that, like, right now, it's just a big, kind of amorphous, hard thing to figure out.
Yeah, and this is Ms. Teas, and I'm not sure, like, I'm not sure what the low-hanging fruit are exactly, I mean, I think we're going to have to decide what that is. I mean, we have to look at this increased density from a lot of other perspectives. We can't forget about stormwater issues, the bulk of stormwater problems are coming from residential now, and including, you know, more impervious surface is going to lead to more of it, so I think we're going to have to probably maybe adjust how stormwater is dealt with on residences, I mean, the stormwater tax has done some work, but there might have to be more work done if we're going to have more surfaces covered. So I just, you know, I think we have to be careful what we think a low-hanging fruit is, I don't want to fix one problem and add two more. And I also, with Mr. Rankin comments before, it's like, we, you know, duplexes aren't going to do it for us, the two new ones, one over a million dollars apiece, and it just added more, you know, it added some tax revenue, but not enough to cover the cost of those two new houses in terms of full costs, looking at schools, roads, you know, library and everything. So we got to be very careful how we do this, and affordability and equity is my main things, and I just, you know, I want to make sure that whatever we do is going to fix those two problems, more than it's going to just add more expensive housing.
Yes, concur. But presumably, we look at what looks like low-hanging fruit, we analyze it, we figure out if it's actually going to be good or not before we take action. All right, getting late. I guess at this point, the draft tweak to our thing mostly is accommodating basically things that we missed because we didn't have as many meetings. The question is, do we want to practically right now adjust some of these, like the right-of-way design and things like that? I don't particularly feel strongly right now, I mostly want to, you know, seems like you guys have, you guys have a sense for what we're interested in, presumably staff is clever enough to come back with some ideas next meeting about how we could proceed, and we could always tweak our work plan more at that point if needed.
Yeah, we can, we can update this based on the, on the feedback tonight, and by we, I mean staff, staff can update this based on the feedback tonight and bring it back to the commission. It may not be at the next meeting, just because of the way, the mechanics of package of posting, but it would be at the first available August meeting.
All righty. Being of which, our next meeting will be July 15th, and it looks like West Falls Church SCSP work session and the UVA Public Art Policy Report.
Yeah, you have an action item on a subdivision.
Okay, which one?
212 East Jefferson.
All right, cool. Guess they worked out yard averaging then, huh? Okay.
Yes.
I thought all those were on pause, but all right. All right, do we have anything else to cover tonight? Any comments from planning commissioners before we wrap this up?